This is a meeting of the Princeton Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. Public participation is governed by Board Bylaw 0169.1, public participation at board meetings. You will now have the roll call. Ms. Better?
Mr. Simons.
Present.
Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Here.
Mrs. Ely.
Here.
Okay, we are all here. Mr. Card, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Card. As for motion for approval or revision of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Better?
Mrs. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Ely.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Yes. Motion passes. The inspirational message, Mr. Card.
Yes, tonight we have Stewart Elementary, Principal Ramsey, along with his fabulous staff and students. Floor is yours.
I guess we should go down. Depends on what they're gonna do.
I would like to thank the board for this opportunity here tonight. I'm excited for you to meet some of our amazing students from Stewart Elementary. Tonight, they will be sharing information about our theme for the year and what makes Stewart so special. Before we begin, I would like to thank Ms. Babel. She set up some of our artwork behind the board. Mrs. Tillman worked on the video that you will see. And then, of course, Ms. Engel, who really did all of the work with all of the students. So, really, really appreciate all their work. But now, it's time that we show off the great students of Stewart. So, it is my pleasure to let the students take over and share the inspirational message.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm honored to speak on behalf of Stewart Elementary. Our building theme this year is "You Belong Here."
Our students come from many places, Mexico, Guatemala, China, Uzbekistan, Ukraine, France, and across the United States. We bring laughs, traditionals, and stress that urge our school. We are reminded that when we make our room, one each children needs to inter- interest. Our unit gives the whole community learns empathy, patience, and respect. This is an example of how we start our morning announcements. Good morning, Stewart Elementary.
Buenos dias, escola primera Stewart. Hay de tal suavidad y valor.
Dobre lotes, studenta, mecha escola.
Say the pledge with your class and make it a great day.
Dia el compromiso con tu clase es un gran día. Se le finge es planearon, ay te voy a dar un gajo en el entreno.
Skaji kliatu suoma klassa, zedete etat deni oltischem.
I asked my class why they felt... I asked my class why they felt they belonged here. The top three reasons, they said, were Mr. Ramsey is always walking around being nice. We have great teachers and we have great friends. We belong.
I love the specials, especially music. It's my favorite.
I enjoy the special activities we have at Stewart. Ms. Tillman organizes an amazing walkathon.
I love art projects. We do like our beautiful bees at our class. What Ms. Babel makes me feel calm. I, I, I obviously love Stewart.
Incorporating music, art, and physical education in school enhances creativity, reduces stress, and promotes oral, oral driving.
In 4th grade, we celebrate each student's unique talents. Our projects often involve collaboration, fostering a sense of teamwork and community.
We learn to support another, one another, which builds strong friendships.
Our class discussions encourage everyone to share their thoughts, leading to a deeper understanding of the world.
We make space for, for every child to shine.
When students feel they belong, attendance and engagement rise. Confidence grows and learning deepens.
Men, bia gete gish liman.
Ya prindad lju is dis.
Nosotras pertenece, pertenezemos aqui.
Aku aina bibi long ditto.
Watachina zukstey si te imas.
One, two, three. We belong.
And we could stay here all night talking about how much we love Stewart Elementary. This was mostly written by all of them, and I could not stop getting messages about, can I come? Where are we coming? I can't wait to come. I mean, this started with three kids and ended up as a message literally 10 minutes ago, please, can I come? They love Stewart Elementary, and we couldn't be any happier. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, for making it an amazing place to work. But now, we'd rather just show you how amazing Stewart Elementary is. This is a song called Borders by Gabby Fronteras, Gabby Moreno, and the song is called Fronteras, which translates to borders. Okay, how about we all? How about we all? Oh boy. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar. Hoy es todo lo que tengo y lo voy a desolar. Poniendo en manifiesto cuánta luz puedo irradiar. Y ser feliz siempre me dio que todo lo puede pegar. Y río y barro está en mis penas y libre sueño. This is where I belong. This is where I belong. Quien sabe lo que mañana nos quisiera regalar.
So we're going to watch those in December and then if those clean up, true timing issues, if not, we'll dig into them because we might have to adjust the forecast. But right now, I'm going to assume those are just little timing issues. Tuition is one of them. Typically, that can run behind or ahead. So we'll watch that. Some of the supplies, supplies we might see go down a bit because remember, we cut building budgets by 10%.
That's right.
So we definitely might see supplies running behind this year. Okay? So those are just little things that we'll watch as we move, move through the fiscal year. The other reports, we're starting, you're starting to see some of encumbrance moving to expenses in the PI fund. So we're, we're paying the bills for the technology, we're paying the bills for tax, we're paying the bills for all those things that are now coming in, and new encumbrances going online also. On the '18 fund report, you're going to see an increase in revenue there. $25,000 check from Jake Sweeney for the naming rights. That, I believe, is the last check we were receiving for them. So that was the full $100,000 for them. We still have some vehicle, change out a part of the contract that we will see. But you'll see that, the expenses creeping up on that, you know? We're starting to see those bills come in as we're getting into the middle of our school year. But those are those funds. The other are just your bank statements, your, for your investments, investment income is running a little bit ahead. We thought it might cool a little bit. It has not cooled yet. Good news for us. So, and then remember, in January, we get the first half of our new voted levy. So we'll start seeing that about a little over $6 million come in, in the second half of this fiscal year from, from the past levy, thank you to the taxpayers. That's the, the monthly report.
In case we can go retro back to tangible personal property.
To be the treasurer at that time.
As they take away the personal property, what, do you have any estimate on the amount of increase or decrease? Because there's a lot of momentum for one side, but maybe they'll flip back to the other side.
So I've been in several of the buildings doing the combination financial talk and listening session. So we've been talking a little bit about this potential ballot issue in November of '26 to remove property taxes. And, you know, I, I have a nice little chart which shows that's 71% of our revenue in this district. So if something would make it to the ballot in November of '26 and become law effective January 1, '27, 71% cut for Princeton City School District in a fiscal year. So that would be halfway through our fiscal year. And as I said, at the high school today, we do have cash balance. So, I mean, it's not like we close our doors immediately. It's never going to happen, public schools. But, you know, those, those are some, what kind, what kind of world would it look like on January 1 if, if property taxes stopped? Because in January is when you, you pay your first half. So then people would say, "I don't have to pay. The ballot issue passed." Because you're paying your first half property taxes. A lot of people also do pay their entire tax bill in the first half. And I, I mean, there's just no replacing 71% of your budget, right? There's not. There's not. So the only options in Ohio so, at this point, are an income tax, increasing income tax, increasing sales tax. So, and those numbers are astronomical to make up that kind of money. So, you know, we were at the Hamilton County meeting, former legislators present, talking about this, and they said, there's just, they just can't see how it would ever pass a general election because the impact on local governments, police, fire, public schools, public libraries, parks, what am I missing? Zoos, everything.
The potholes we're seeing right now. Be a problem.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So.
And that's what I've heard too about, is the ballot. People become, we have time, they're getting educated now. They become more educated, like, whoa, it always sounds great until you say, "These things have to be paid." It's something, and we all want our police and our fire and our nice, our roads fixed and our parks and, so, you know, it's an ongoing conversation. I have a meeting tomorrow, I'm sure we'll be talking about.
Yes, I don't know how the signature collection is, is going. I, I haven't heard an update on that for a while, but.
I'll ask tomorrow. They may, they may have. I don't know if people are thinking that. I haven't.
Mm-hmm. We'll take quite for a while, so.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. D, to set the organizational meeting date and time for January 2026. Say again. There was a suggestion, the 5th of January?
It's the first Monday.
Okay.
January 20th, it's a Tuesday. You're saying the 5th of January?
Yes.
First Monday.
For the org meeting.
First Monday, January 5th. I guess somebody needs to take time to look at their schedule.
Any other concerns or questions?
I can do the 5th.
I move to set the date of the 2026 organizational meeting for January 5, 2026. That, 6:30. Yeah.
That's fine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. D, to set the organizational meeting date and time for January 2026. Say again. There was a suggestion, the 5th of January?
It's the first Monday.
Okay.
January 20th, it's a Tuesday. You're saying the 5th of January?
Yes.
First Monday.
For the org meeting.
First Monday, January 5th. I guess somebody needs to take time to look at their schedule.
Any other concerns or questions?
I can do the 5th.
I move to set the date of the 2026 organizational meeting for January 5, 2026. That, 6:30. Yeah.
That's fine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion for the budget hearing. Meeting date and time in January 2026.
We won't have a tax budget ready that soon.
How soon will it be ready?
Can have it ready the next, the next week.
The second Monday is the 12th. Probably when we set the calendar, that'll probably be the first board meeting, and you can do it then probably, same time as the first board meeting before. That's what, that's what I think would be best. And we have a sample list of meetings possible that I'll bring to the organizational meeting, the dates throughout for the remainder of the year, that we can look and see if we need to adjust anything.
Okay. And do we do that before a board meeting?
Typically.
Like at 6:15?
Typically.
Okay. I move to set the date of the 2026 budget hearing for Monday, January 12 at 6:15 PM.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Yes. Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. Need a motion for agreement with LearnWell.
I move to approve the agreement with LearnWell as presented.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Card?
Yes, this is just, provide educational opportunities for our hospitalized students, behavioral and things of that nature. This is just for the '25, '26 school year, and be reevaluated as needed. So that's what, that's really all that is.
Are they providing people or is it online or accommodation?
They go there and there's people and I know the team worked very hard to see where we're going to put kids, had to get to a certain level before they would go here. So we had to do that for a little bit.
Mrs. Pedder.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next motion for approval of the resolution to adopt a special education policies.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
This is something we have to do every year now that says, we will follow procedures and policies for our special needs students. So that's really all it is, something we have to approve at, at each year.
Okay. No further discussion, Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. D, to set the organizational meeting date and time for January 2026. Say again. There was a suggestion, the 5th of January?
It's the first Monday.
January 20th, it's a Tuesday. You're saying the 5th of January?
Yes.
First Monday.
For the org meeting.
First Monday, January 5th. I guess somebody needs to take time to look at their schedule. I can do the 5th.
I move to set the date of the 2026 organizational meeting for January 5, 2026. That, 6:30. Yeah.
That's fine.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
This is something we have to do every year now that says, we will follow procedures and policies for our special needs students. So that's really all it is, something we have to approve at, at each year.
Okay. No further discussion, Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. D, to set the organizational meeting date and time for January 2026. Say again. There was a suggestion, the 5th of January?
It's the first Monday.
Okay.
January 20th, it's a Tuesday. You're saying the 5th of January?
Yes.
First Monday.
For the org meeting.
First Monday, January 5th. I guess somebody needs to take time to look at their schedule.
Any other concerns or questions?
I can do the 5th.
I move to set the date of the 2026 organizational meeting for January 5, 2026. That, 6:30. Yeah.
That's fine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion for the budget hearing. Meeting date and time in January 2026.
We won't have a tax budget ready that soon.
How soon will it be ready?
Can have it ready the next, the next week.
The second Monday is the 12th. Probably when we set the calendar, that'll probably be the first board meeting, and you can do it then probably, same time as the first board meeting before. That's what, that's what I think would be best. And we have a sample list of meetings possible that I'll bring to the organizational meeting, the dates throughout for the remainder of the year, that we can look and see if we need to adjust anything.
Okay. And do we do that before a board meeting?
Typically.
Like at 6:15?
Typically.
Okay. I move to set the date of the 2026 budget hearing for Monday, January 12 at 6:15 PM.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Yes. Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion for the budget hearing. Meeting date and time in January 2026.
We won't have a tax budget ready that soon.
How soon will it be ready?
Can have it ready the next, the next week.
The second Monday is the 12th. Probably when we set the calendar, that'll probably be the first board meeting, and you can do it then probably, same time as the first board meeting before. That's what, that's what I think would be best. And we have a sample list of meetings possible that I'll bring to the organizational meeting, the dates throughout for the remainder of the year, that we can look and see if we need to adjust anything.
Okay. And do we do that before a board meeting?
Typically.
Like at 6:15?
Typically.
Okay. I move to set the date of the 2026 budget hearing for Monday, January 12 at 6:15 PM.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Yes. Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion for the budget hearing. Meeting date and time in January 2026.
We won't have a tax budget ready that soon.
How soon will it be ready?
Can have it ready the next, the next week.
The second Monday is the 12th. Probably when we set the calendar, that'll probably be the first board meeting, and you can do it then probably, same time as the first board meeting before. That's what, that's what I think would be best. And we have a sample list of meetings possible that I'll bring to the organizational meeting, the dates throughout for the remainder of the year, that we can look and see if we need to adjust anything.
Okay. And do we do that before a board meeting?
Typically.
Like at 6:15?
Typically.
Okay. I move to set the date of the 2026 budget hearing for Monday, January 12 at 6:15 PM.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Yes. Moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion for that.
I move to appoint Mary Cleveland as the president pro temp for the established 2026 organizational meeting.
Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Ely.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Motion passes. F, appointment of President Pro Tem for the organizational meeting. Need a motion for that.
I move to appoint Mary Cleveland as the President Pro Tem for the established 2026 organizational meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And that would be January 5th, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Ely.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland. Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven is academic update.
Yes, uh, Mrs. Westwright, Social Superintendent, will come up and present some information to us through the Youth True survey of our students.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is my honor to come and talk to you about our Youth True survey. So as we started this evening, we talked a lot about voice and you belong here. And so one of the things we've done with the Youth True survey is listen to our students and take a survey every year. I always have this feeling, and we talk about it a lot at Princeton, that we are outstanding place, our students are wonderful, everyone is doing great things, and we hear those inspirational messages. So what the Youth True survey does for us is kind of quantify that information. So we know what it feels like, we know when we hear them speak, but this gives us some very specific data points. And so you have two things from me. Um, the first is just a little informational sheet about what the Youth True survey is. And as I'm speaking about percentiles, it's important to know that that's a survey over 3 million students across 39 states, representing 500 districts, 2,500 schools, and more than 8,600 surveys questions fielded. So that is what we're talking about when I start talking about percentiles with Youth True. So talked a little bit about that. We know that Mr. Card, um, is a huge proponent, as we all are, as district leaders, of student voice. Really listening to the kids and understanding what their experience that they're living every day. What we also wanted to do with our Youth True survey is really match that to our strategic plan. So as he talked about earlier in the board meeting, here are our priority areas for the strategic plan, and here are some of the what Youth True survey core themes and additional topics that hit on those themes. Today, I'm just going to review a few major ones that we really talked about this summer with our principals. One of the things educators that I love about us, we get to have two new years, two goal-setting places. We do our goal-setting in the summer, so many of you are at our administrative retreat in the summer where we talked about some of this data so the principals knew how to, um, move forward in the year. But January is also a new year too, so we like to revisit it and make sure that we're on the right track. So we had 97% of our students in grades four and five take the survey, middle school students, representing all middle school students, and if there are any Innovation Center students that are in 8th grade or 7th grade, and then high school, including the Innovation Center and the high school. So 71% of our high school age students, 90% in middle school, and 97% elementary. So when we talk about the data from those levels, those are the kids we're talking about. So one of the major areas, of course, is academic excellence. Are we providing the opportunities for the students? And so the question the students were asked is how strongly do students feel that they are challenged by their coursework and the teachers? So we were very excited that we're seeing a lot of growth with that, with elementary moving from 36th to 67th. Um, I can show you the slides next, so they, they are seeing that growth. This is from the students saying, we feel that we are being challenged. Some of them still want a little bit more, and we love to hear that, we want to continue to make it more rigorous, but clearly we are challenging and making progress in that area. So if you look at the chart, you see in April 2022, the students answered that question one way, and by the end, they're answered a different way. So the first bullet point, you can't see it very well on the slide, but you can see it on your sheet. Elementary started at 36% in 2022, there is 67%. The middle school started at 55 up to 64, and the high school age students, 56 up to 74. So we're excited about that progress and want to keep moving forward with how we are challenging our students. This is the one that really hit today, and I felt like it went right along with what the students were talking about, affirmation and belonging. In order for our students to continue to have that academic growth, they have to feel like they belong in school. And this question is how strongly do students feel welcome at their school and have collaborative, or how strongly do students feel welcome at their school and have collaborative relationships with their classmates? I'm going to skip right to the chart because I just love it so much. Um, but you can see on the chart, um, at the elementary, it started at 36, it went to 70th percentile. So in 2023, when they asked this question, now some questions are asked differently, so that's why elementary, it started in 23 for that question, and up at 26, from 36 to 70th. For middle school, they started at 49th up to 67th. And high school, with age students, again, that's Innovation Center and the Princeton High School, from the 29th percent to the 60th percent of how our students feel, are they feeling included and welcome in their school? And that is what the students are telling us. The next area, we kind of went back and forth a little bit with this stewardship. They're really talking more about culture and the idea of fairness and respect. I feel like most of our stewardship goal is more about, I felt like it's more treasure and accountability and using your resources, but I could see where they're talking about the culture of respect and fairness. So that was the question, how strongly do students believe that their school fosters a culture of respect and fairness? Um, we have seen increases in that area from our students. Um, we still have to continue to figure out, our kids are worried that they feel like they treat the adults with respect, but they feel like some students don't treat the adults with respect. So they're more worried about their, their own peers and how they treat other adults in there, and so that's an area of focus for us. So just so you know, that, that's where we are with that one. That one's a little different. I, like I said, I don't know that it feels as much about stewardship as it does about culture, but the students do want to make sure that everyone is treated with respect and accountable and transparent, and so. Um, and we do see that growth and increase there as well over the years from 41 to 59, but you can still, we're still in the middle area with that. So we know teenagers and we know all students feel like they should be treated as equals, even if they're 10. But, um, we still have to listen to that because if not, you can't just, you know, it's a different age, or you can't just tell a child, you're a child where no one's listening to you. They want to make sure that they're listened to and treated fairly. So we're doing better, but we still have room to grow in that culture area. And then one of the large issues that we had to tackle in back in 2022 and 2023 was safety. And so we asked the students over the years, how strongly do students feel about being safe at school, trust adults to respond to their safety concerns, and believe that their school is prepared for emergencies? And again, this is a huge celebration for us. Um, from 2022, the elementary went from 38th percentile to the 71st percentile in how safe the kids feel at school. Middle school from the 27th to the 49th, and high school age students from the 49th to 30, 46th to 38. And so we know we have a lot of things that are happening with the high school age group, but kudos to our team for really working through that and digging in. There's been a lot in our world and society over the years, and so this is one we continue to dig into and make sure we ask the students, do you feel safe? Uh, Mr. Card and his superintendent's cabinet, that was one of our big focus questions. Do you have an adult that you know you can go to at school that you feel safe with going to? And so kudos to the team, um, our Director of Security, and we put a lot of things in place, we have seen growth, but that's going to be something that all schools continue to have to focus on, uh, because safety is going to be a large priority. So we're, we're very thankful to have this partnership with Youth Truth. In the past, we had interviewed students, staff, and parents. Uh, with our budget reductions this year, we, we were only able to prioritize students. And so again, it's a way for us to really quantify what we feel, and we have quantified improvements in areas like academic rigor, belonging, relationships, and safety. We continue to have to grow in those areas to make sure that they're challenged, supported, and feel safe. And we, we're not sure where we're going to head with Youth Truth this year. It may be something that we have to come up with our own survey and wouldn't be able to see the trends quite as accurately, uh, but it does let us know where we, where we've been. And under Mr. Card's leadership and the leadership of the building principals that have really taken this seriously, we've made a lot of growth for our students, so thank you.
Why, why will we not do it this year potentially? Is it?
Well, the finances is the thing we do. You know, with, with the adults in the community, we're coming up with a survey internally, so we may look at that. We'll just see where we're at with that time, and we'll let you know. See what you guys expect, what the expectation is.
I mean, just the students, not the adults?
Yeah, we may still do that. Not saying we're not going to, we're going to look at it, and we'll, we'll talk more about that.
Okay.
Um, it is between $15,000 and $17,000 last year. Um, so they said we do need to make a decision by January, and I know we've been working with Mrs. Pedder on our, you know, our finances and our projections to see where we are with that.
Yes.
Students only.
And I will say, I believe we got a little bit of a break on that price, that was a break price. We talked to them and, you know, bartered a little bit there, so.
So I have not checked the price this year because, like I said, I knew we were, we moved in different directions for the, the parents and staff, so, uh, but I think it's really important, and our team has really responded well to seeing it in numbers. And we do, we do ask the same questions to the kids when we go in and talk to them, and we give the principals that information. Like we've talked to the kids, they're worried about this, they don't like this, you know? And our principals really do a great job responding to that, but again, it's really nice to see it in a quantifiable chart to say, you, you made these changes, it's working, the kids are doing well, so.
Under, um, under health and safety, did you find that more high school students took part in the survey versus middle school? Or was it about the same?
It's the same. So the high school was still just about 70% that answered. And so when they talked about feeling safer in the classroom, their, their discussions were more about hallways. And we know that, that's when you're with everybody. They're, they're good when they're in the classroom, it's when they're in the hallways and we have large groups of kids transitioning, and they still said they're feeling better about it, but that's where they have questions. And that, that's what the survey helps us target. Like, so I feel fine when I'm in the classroom, I feel good when I'm with my teacher, I worry about hallways, and I worry about out, they worry about outside influences. I mean, they watch the news too, so.
Yeah.
Um, our kids are smart and they, they know that other things are happening, but they really have responded well to the measures that we put in place, and you can see that with their, with their numbers of how they're feeling in the school growing, so.
Did their survey recommend any suggestions or offer them opportunity to share how things could be safer, especially high schools?
One of the things they do is they do, they can write comments, and then that's where, uh, Mr. Card and the team that have had listening sessions with the kids, they let us know. They let us know what they like, they let us know what they don't like. But sometimes they let us know, you know, we don't like that sometimes there's somebody in the hallway right there, I really wish they weren't there, but I know that they're there to make sure that we're safe. Like, so they give us a whole speech about changes that we've made and why we made that change. They tell us if they like it or if they don't, but they know why we're doing it, which is critical.
And I would say with the superintendent, uh, student superintendent cabinet, um, we made sure when we chose, when people applied, everybody got to be on it. There were so many, I, we want, as, as I told you, we made sure we had a wide range of students, so we're hitting all different areas of the kids. You can't just have all the kids are in the band or choir, you can't have all the athletes, you got to have kids from all, because they're hearing stuff from different kids.
Right.
I will say Princeton is the most unique place I've ever been around to where a lot of kids intertwine through those groups, but still have that, some of that separation. So that's why it's so important to have those different groups you're hearing from everybody. And what I tell them is, go ask your friends, I give them questions, go ask your friends, like, you might have opinion, but you might be friends who might think different. So ask your friends, see what they think, and bring that all back, because you're representing the school, not just yourself, so.
And, and I wonder, do we still have that anonymous number we used to have? Most high schools have it, where if you are concerned about your safety or weaponry, there's an 800 or anonymous number you can call.
We absolutely do, and we have that posted, I know we, yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to section eight. Treasurers' report.
Just one item, wanted to let everyone know that we have begun the audit process, um, the final part, the first couple of months here in October, November, we work on the financial, uh, report that, uh, Plattenburg Accounting Group helps us prepare. That is a document that's used by people who have bonds with the, with the district for all the building we have done. Uh, that document is then actually also audited during our audit, just to make sure everything there is in compliance. But the team, um, we have an independent accounting firm that does our audit. We haven't been with the state for, I think this is six years out from the state. Um, so they've started their work, and this is a race to the finish line now, they've been very busy, uh, they've taken on some other work, but it's the sixth year with Princeton, they, they know what to expect, what to do, but it's going to be a race these last, next two weeks, because they do know that a lot of people go away in two weeks. And, uh, we have to get all our information before people leave on break, and, uh, we can put the final reports together after everyone leaves. And then it's to be submitted by the end of December to, to stay on our timeline, and, uh, for our, the awards that we apply for also are expected to be applied for by the end of the calendar year. So it's a race. You all should have received an email from our friend Seth asking you to fill out, I think it's fraud, fraud report. Um, so that's just part of the process that we do every year, um, that he asks the board members to, to fill that out. So Seth is, is a, is a valid email, it is a good.
So it's not a phishing thing.
It is not phishing. Seth Ashley at Milhuff Stang, and, uh, respond to him when you have time. But that's it, we're, it's, it's hot and heavy right now. The team has been great, those that have been questioned so far have responded very quickly, they know. That's one comment they always make about Princeton is that, that we respond very quickly too. We don't put them off, and, uh, I'm pretty serious that you do not want me calling you on Christmas Eve. And I will. So, um, everybody's been great, so we're hot and heavy on it.
Yeah, refresh my memory, how often are we required to be audited by the state?
One every year, once a year. So, and, you know, this is a full state audit that gets reported to the auditor state, his team then reviews, even if it's an independent audit, the auditor of state still reviews our, their findings and can come back and ask questions.
And I applaud you because he came down and gave you an award.
That was an award.
In person.
Yep, that's the near perfect, perfect, perfect award, so it's been, we have some interesting challenges occasionally. We have had a couple of issues with our financial statements, so, um, I told Plattenburg they're on the line, we've got to be perfect this year, so. And it's just a little nitpicky. So, um, district's done very well. That's me, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Card?
Yes, I have a few more things to hurt, but just quickly, I'll be quick. As you know, holiday music's in the air, the, our holiday concerts, I just want to give a little shout out to them. Uh, last week, one of the concerts was Thursday, so the rest of them are coming. PHS instrumental sounds of the season, uh, 12:09 at 7, that's tomorrow. PSS choral sounds of the season is 12:10, that's Wednesday at 7. These are on Viking Village, Matthew's Auditorium. Um, the Heritage Hill Winter Concert, Holiday Concert is 12:11 at 6, and the PS, PHS Holiday Concert, um, is, um, the same time at 7. So I'll get to go to Heritage Hill, and then, because she's already, you got to come, I didn't make her laugh, I told her I'd be there, and then we'll run over to 7 to see the high school, that's the big holiday concert you asked about.
That's the one where the alumni come?
I believe so.
What's that date again?
Uh, Thursday, it's just Thursday, so it'd be 7th, no, 11th.
It's Thursday.
Springdale also has one that night at 7 as well, so I'm, I'm with the Springdale's veterans, so I can go to Heritage Hill for this, because like I get to high school, so we, I, I planned it out. Um, but she understands, I try to go as much as I can. Um, then the Princeton Holiday Concert for Choir, 12:15 at 7 PM. Um, Holiday Band Concert for Princeton Community Middle School, 12:16, and Holiday Orchestra is 12:17. Um, and then the last day for students is 12:19, so, so they're excited. Uh, my senior daughter keeps, I, why I got to go to school, it's almost Christmas, you know, she's on me a little bit. I will say, um, a lot of people are happy about our snow day we had. So she's wanting another one of those. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Frickie because he comes and picks me up, I think he picked about 3:45 that morning, and it was bad, worst I've ever, it's worse I've ever seen it. Um, and we went all over the district, and, I mean, it was horrible. So it was a really easy call, I was driving down, I'd call another superintendent, we just left my, my house going down Phil Durrell, and Phil Durrell's, you know how that is. And I, I texted another superintendent, like, what'd you think? He goes, already canceled. He said, I went two blocks and canceled.
We were late.
I said, nah, I'm not doing that, but let me drive around and see. But once we got to 42 and 275, I knew what I was going to do, but I wanted to check everything out first. Um, so it was, it was the easiest call I've ever had to make, I like those ones.
Yeah.
So, and then, um, the various elementaries don't get mad at me if you have concerts, these are the ones that people send them on my calendar, so I don't want people mad at me, so I didn't say the other elementaries, but they didn't send them to me, I don't have them on my calendar. So I said the ones I had. Uh, a lot of sports going on, I'm not going through all that, but, uh, go to viketation.org, between ba, girls, boys, basketball, wrestling, and chess, and swimming, and what am I missing? I don't know what else, but there's so much going on every night, there's something, so.
Wrestling.
Wrestling, I said, I said wrestling, oh, I miss wrest, oh, I miss wrestling. Wrestling, so try to get out and check out our student athletes, they work hard, um, and they are student athletes, as you saw, our fall students' GPAs were really great, I put out, um, were awesome. Something else that's kind of cool is, um, Commissioner Victoria Parks is retiring, county commissioner, I guess county commissioner, I believe. And, um, uh, from public office, uh, she's an Air Force veteran, and they asked ROTC to go down and, and start that. They saw this, when we went down to the Cold, Cold War Memorial thing, Ms. Roddy and I went down with our kids, um, at the Freedom Center, they saw how well they did, so they're going Wednesday at City Hall at 10. Um, they just asked us Friday, so we turned around pretty quick, and I, she goes, I said, well, Vice Mayor called, Vice Mayor sent, he, sent me an email, he, I was out of town, he sent it to me, I said, well, we're going to figure it out, um, if we can get the kids. Because 2 o'clock's kind of hard with our kids getting out of school, and, uh, but we'll get a van and we'll have Mr. Frickie or someone, we'll be driving them down, uh, because buses, you can't get buses, that time they're out doing their thing. But I think it'll be, I don't know if I'm going to get to go because I have something else that night, so I don't know if I can get down there and get back and get back, uh, but we'll see. If Ms. Roddy drives me, I might go, how about that? Uh, and then really, I just want to, um, from, from my family to everybody else, happy holiday season. I know we're getting there. Uh, for those that have tough things going on this holiday season, I want to say, we're thinking about you and we have you in our thoughts. Hopefully you get to enjoy family and friends and a little bit of relaxation and a lot of good food, um, during that time. So I just wanted to say that, and, um, have a happy, healthy holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cleveland, since you're representing Ohio, is there anything to share? Do you have anything to share?
Well, it's quiet right now. And the Capitol Conference, so, uh, right now there in this, uh, Capitol, what happened, um, what we did, what could have been done, um, in preparation for quite a few planning sessions that are coming up in early January.
I would say, we'll do this again in January, but your installation's coming up on January 10th.
Oh.
At Math, at Matthew's Auditorium, where she'll be installed as the OSBA president, so I want to throw it out now, since we're on TV, we'll throw it out again in Jan, because the next board meeting we have, it'll be passed on TV, so I wanted to throw that out real quick.
What time is that?
It's going to be on January 10th here at Princeton, um, 1 o'clock.
Well, I think we're doing the Student Fair at noon, and then 1 o'clock, the actual ceremony.
It's going to be at Viking Village?
We'll, we'll, we have, we have an invite for you.
Support, uh, highlight, the highlighting of Princeton that day. We do a lot of, um, sharing the rest of the state, what Princeton is all about, so hopefully that will be a lot of people coming, helping us do that. Kind of excited because we've got a lot of people coming from all over the state, um, and many have never been there, so they've heard about Princeton, but they don't actually know.
You know, and, and we talked about this in some of our meetings, I used to say when I was a principal, on a graduation, there'd be 8, 10,000 people in the Centaun Center, and I'd tell the kids, you need to be on point, and we got to show off here, because this might, half this crowd may be the only time they see us. So we're going to make sure we're, we're doing it right, and, uh, with, with Ms. Roddy and, and you and your daughter, and Ms. Rod, uh, Mrs. Slaughter and everybody else helping, um, it's.
It's taken a lot of.
It's a lot, we, we've had a lot of meetings and a lot of work, but we want to make sure that, um, we show everybody. People know about Princeton, I, I go all over the state, and they know we want to show, so.
Yeah, they play, so they've heard of it, they know about us, I can't stop talking about us, um, but they've not ever had the opportunity to actually experience it, so now's the real chance to really experience it.
Excellent. Mrs. Ely, anything to add? Mrs. Kessler. Mrs. Ruff.
Pardon? Miss Moore? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I understand we took part in a chess tournament. Does anybody know how we did, or?
I know we had, we had a couple of kids play, I wa, I didn't get to go because I was out of town, I usually go to that. I know we had one of our students at the high school team, made, got the second all, second team all-league in the GMC.
Great.
Um, he was also the, he was the senior, on senior day, that young man is our senior chess player, so that was kind of neat. I know we had two kids get medals, at least two that I know of, at the, at the chess, so.
Great. Thank you.
My last, uh, comment for myself is, uh, while looking at a couple of, um, sports-related, uh, websites, one of them listed our, um, one of our athletic teams, I believe it was football, is being in the top 25 overall in the entire state. But we kind of knew that already. What I didn't know was the write-up of Princeton, which said that we were a high-achieving, academically-oriented school district with, um, different, uh, economic diversity. And, um, that was the first time, it was probably the best write-up I've ever read about Princeton, um, in that sort of thing.
You know, I'll say, I'll say, you know, I always put out the GPAs for the sport teams at the, at the, it's funny to this point now, I didn't, I, I wasn't, I couldn't take a picture of it. Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Roberts both sent me a pic, they knew I wanted that, they know it's going out, first thing I, I don't put out about what we won, that, well, got all-league, I put that out first, because as a former athlete, there's a stereotype for us sometimes, that we can't academically achieve. And our kids are showing they can achieve it both at a high level, so that's something we're going to be on the mountaintop and shout out and put out and tell people all the time, so yes, sir.
That was, that was excellent. I'll send a, a copy out to the rest of the board. Our next evolution is section nine, executive session. Motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Mrs. Pedder?
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ely?
Yes.
We are in the executive session.